Ready? Ready? Okay. I'm starting. I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District Number 67 Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, October 25th, 2011. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk? Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Penderzky?
Present.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Wald?
Here.
All present. Welcome to everyone. I would like to start with an update on our superintendent's search. As of one week ago, we had eighty-seven applications that had been submitted or were in the process of being completed. About half of them are from outside of the state. And according to our consultants, there are many that are really not qualified to the level of this superintendent's search, but we do have a great base at this point. In addition, Doctors Hanson and Cluff are in the process of recruiting current superintendents that they think would be a great fit for our district. They've had several conversations and they do feel that they have piqued some interest. They will do an initial screening interview and they have already set up five of those, so all is on track and going very well with the superintendent's search. In addition, the two school boards, the high school and District 67, have created subcommittees to focus on specific tasks that need to be completed before selecting the new superintendent or hiring the new superintendent. The subcommittees are Superintendent Job Description, of which Rick Schuler is a part; the Salary and Compensation Comparatives, of which Bill Anderson and Jeff Penderzky are a part; the Reference Checks of the Final Candidate, of which Lori Rose and Leslie Fisher are a part; and the Negotiation of the Contract with the Final Candidate, which John Julian and myself will be doing. And that concludes the President's Report. Dr. Griffith, the Superintendent's Report.
Madam President, members of the Board and members of the audience, thank you for being here. Does this help a little bit if I speak into the microphone a little closer? So, guess what I'd like to say to the Board members? I've taken a look at some of the recent programming on local television and some of our meetings, the video feed and the sound is actually not very good. So I have a couple of suggestions for us. First of all, we've talked with LFTV about making sure that everything we put on the screen up here is computer-fed, rather than the camera just pointing to the screen, because that is way better. Then secondly, almost swallow the microphone. I think the rule is your audience is the microphone. You really have, if, here, watch this. Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna start talking like this, because, you know, what did you say? Well, you know, you just, so we've tried to point the microphones actually to the center. And so, people on my left here, it's on your right. People on my right, it's on your left. Basically, that's so that you can look to the center of the room. We hope that that's a little easier. And Board members, just a reminder, hold down the bar, as I am, and I think we'll get it, we're gonna get a much better sound for the meeting, so. By the way, the tech staff has said they would rate each one of us by the end of the meeting. Yeah, it'll be this or this. So again, I think for audiences during the month who would like to view, and we do put, view the, any of the reports that we're doing, and we put this on our website so that we, so they can be seen also off of our website, too. So, just a little parenthetical for everybody. I meant to have with me tonight, oh my gosh, I forgot to get it, but we did something very recently at Deerpath Middle School that had never happened before. We took second in state, and it was a statewide competition for cross-country, and Lake Forest Deerpath Middle School placed second in state. Our girls' lacrosse team is a huge trophy. It's down at the middle school principal's office right now.
Girls' track team.
I'm sorry. Girls' cross-country, I said lacrosse.
Yeah, cross-country.
Sorry, my daughter was the captain of lacrosse teams. That was twenty years ago. No, the girls' cross-country team took second in state, and we're very proud. It's many, many girls that were involved in it, by the way, so, wanna just congratulate the families, the girls that were involved. Martha Saustri is the head coach. She's our physical education teacher, wellness teacher at Cherokee School, just a, just a great person. So, many kudos to the staff involved for that, we're very proud of them. It's the first, I've been here eighteen years and actually never seen a statewide award like that in athletics from Deerpath Middle School. Secondly, I don't know, Cornelius, are we where I could show some enrollment, use the, what do I wanna say, the, yeah, the document camera? And Andy, do you have the enrollment sheet in your packet? Do you have a board packet? Okay. There it is, that sheet, Andy. I'd like to show this to the community, just very briefly. Andy, show the bottom chart, okay? We, I thought our Board of Education, Education, Operation, and Finance Committees constantly receive a stream of information about current, past, and future practices in our district, and always trying to do forward planning. So this is the time of the year that we would look at the enrollment for, in our schools, and how does it compare with past years? And most importantly, what are the trends? I'll go ahead and say that this chart represents a downward trend. The very peak year, I've gotta hold this up since I'm speaking into the microphone, the very peak year of enrollment was in 2005 and '06 with student enrollment of 2,258. Oops, hold that thought. In 1994, eighteen years ago, when I arrived here, the district enrollment was approximately 1,825, eight-hundred-and-fifty. So we rose from eight-hundred-and-fifty to twenty-two-fifty over approximately ten, twelve-year period. And the past five years, and Andy, I think you can put your finger on 2011, I mean, it's just 2010-11, just do 2010-11. And you can see that from the peak, we've dropped nine and a half percent in the last five years. And if you go down another five years to 2015, '16, that's another thirteen percent drop. So that's, overall, that'd be about a twenty-four percent drop of enrollment. Now, let me just say that this is using the, what's called the cohort survival method, so each cohort grade level is just march forward one grade level every year, so it's a snapshot taken, advance the group one year, it's a snapshot taken. Make some assumptions on historical experience on kindergarten, and then what is your population in the forward years. So it does not take into account changes in the economy, changes in housing prices, development of further, any further development in the communities such as lots that where new construction comes in. So this is not ever going to be accurate. This is just based on current trends. What do we think the enrollment will be five years from now? Now, the implications for this is that, of course, we're gonna have smaller populations in each school. Are there any educational effects, any educational impacts? Are there any operational impacts? Financially, what would that mean to us? Local funding, state funding, federal funding? So that's the kind of analysis, Board members, that during the year, each of our committees will have a chance to look at this and talk about this with the administration. If there are anticipated changes, we would want that planning to begin one, two, three years in advance, so that we can be very thoughtful about any particular chances, changes based on enrollment trends. Obviously, when we were growing, we didn't have enough classrooms. So when new developments came into Lake Forest, we had to figure out how to pay for the expanded schools when we went from eighteen-fifty to twenty-two-fifty. And I think the community, the Board did a great job of accommodating for that. What does that mean now going into the future? So, with a declining enrollment, too. And will this last? If the economy starts to bounce back and housing prices are at a level that are a little bit more affordable to families also, I mean, obviously, everyone's been affected by the reduction in property value, so it could actually cause a spurt, and I think that's something to just be aware of, too. So, just for our community, it's a trend that we're watching and that we'll be just cogitating over going into the year and on into next year also, over any potential particular changes with respect to educational, operational, and financial implications. Board members, are there any questions about that?
Yeah, Harry, I have a question for you. Historically, how quickly do these trends change, in your experience? How volatile are the trend lines?
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a good question. Like everything else, we're pretty slow. You know, you start to, you can start to see it, Rick, in, there's several sources of information that are very helpful to us. One is the City of Lake Forest. The City of Lake Forest monitors hookups, lot developments. We are in the pipeline of information on a routine basis. District 67 specifically is an adjunct part of the City of Lake Forest. City of Lake Forest owns our schools, literally owns the schools. The deeds are held by the city. Our budget is approved by the city, our tax rate is approved by the City of Lake Forest. It's very unique in the state of Illinois. So we have a very close working relationship. We are routinely in contact. The newcomers group in the City of Lake Forest is very, it's a very strong group for anyone new to our community. There's a, reaching out to families, would you like to join newcomers? We have lots of activities to help you accommodate and adjust. So we're in touch with them also, so we're pretty good at being able to monitor. And I would say it happens slowly, Rick. It becomes a trend. Never is like a, in one year, suddenly four hundred more kids show up. That's probably, literally impossible for that to happen. So, I feel like we, if we just stay, pay attentive to the numbers, we can stay ahead of it, always stay slightly ahead of it. If we don't, though, we don't talk about it. It can sneak up on you, and quite frankly, it happened at the high school. It snuck up on the high school without expansions. The high school became a very cramped place. Julia, you remember that with your own children at the high school, how difficult that was? And that required, in the end, a referendum, which, of course, the community did for the high school, and that was a major adjustment, but it was a very painful one, too, to get all of that done properly. Board members, we do monitor class sizes, I've shown you that. All class, all, all grade levels are within class size policy. Of course, there are always, every year, imbalances, but that's, the imbalances exist because we are a school district that believes in trying to differentiate our instruction to match the learning needs of our students. So we have very accelerated classes. We have other classes where students need additional study time, additional time with their teachers on different topics. And so that differentiated curriculum, differentiated instructional methodology we have in the middle school, for example, or even in our lower grades, is gonna, of necessity, have some, a few, a couple of classes that are larger and a couple of classes that are smaller. But on balance, our class size average across the district is, in almost every grade level is about twenty-one to twenty-two. I actually have it by grade level. So we're, we're well within our policy, District 67's policy on grade level, excuse me, on class size, is twenty-two to one in grades K and one, and twenty-four to one in grades two through eight. Now, should there become a situation where four third-grade classrooms have twenty-five, 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 then we might look to an aide, a teaching assistant to come into the, I mean, there's like different things that we could do. The fact that there might be a twenty-three, a twenty-four, and a twenty-five is still within Board policy. It's the overall average that is, is what our, how we follow our policy, not an absolute standard against every classroom. I think that would make it harder to actually deliver the instructional program that we have if we were to do that. Well, in fact, I can tell you right now, I actually did the math for you. In the fifth grade, the average, we have eleven classroom sections, and in fifth grade, the average class size is twenty-one point nine. In sixth grade, we have twelve classroom, regular classroom teachers. We have, that averages lower, at twenty point nine. Remember, twenty-four point oh is the, is the policy. Seventh grade is our largest, at twenty-two point eight, average. And eighth grade is the second largest, at twenty-two point three. So all grade levels are within, are less than the twenty-four to one and therefore within current policy. Board members, just, I'd like to look at your calendar for February 6th, Monday, February 6th. I, I don't know, is it, who does the EdRed report, but there's a dinner coming up, it's an annual event. Usually, it's a pretty good speaker. EdRed is the lobbying organization that represents Chicagoland suburban schools in Springfield. We make a small contribution to be a member. It's worthwhile, because they watch legislation for us, but they have an annual dinner event, and this year it'll be February 6th at the Chicago Marriott O'Hare Hotel on Higgins Road. We'll send more information out if you wish. It'll be a very interesting speaker, because it's Charlotte Danielson, and she is maybe the nation's leading, one of the two or three nation's leading experts on teacher evaluation. Teacher evaluation is really her, her background, and very, she's got a great philosophy. We do some Danielson philosophy in our own school district. Think you might find it very interesting. That's the annual EdRed Dinner on February 6th, and I think that concludes the Superintendent's Report. Marriott O'Hare on Higgins Road.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Where'd my agenda go? That brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience that would like to address the Board on a topic not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to reports. Dr. Griffith, the World Language Report.
Thank you, Board members. This is the time of the year to look back and see how we did last year on just some very simple metrics that we follow with our World Language Program, but also to, and to think a little bit, look a little bit at this year and talk about what the future might be. So Dr. Hendrickson is here to do just a precis of the information that we have on World Language. So representing the Board Education Committee, Andy is here to just give you a brief update on, on status of World Language in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith, Board members. This report will be in two parts, basically, but woven together. We're gonna look at last year and innovations and implementation and outcomes, as well as giving you an update on our immersion program this year, which is a big deal for us this year. So what better start to have the world in front of us? Hope this doesn't make you dizzy. This is our fabulous Deerpath Middle School staff, French, Latin, Mandarin, and Spanish teachers. Changed here, Ms. Shaw is new to us. She teaches grades three through six, French. And Kitty Barron's got married, so Mrs. McMahon is there. You might not recognize that name, but this is a tremendous staff we have. Ms. Song is our new Mandarin teacher. Third year of teaching for her. We got her from MSU, but she came to us from two years of teaching successfully in Tennessee. This is the distribution of students this past, this past year and this year. So the four-year average, blue, being 2008. 2008 was key, because that's when we began our Mandarin instruction. I think the reason, I wanted to point out this slide to you, is that as Mandarin has grown from seven percent across the board in grades four through eight to now this year nine percent, that's significant for Mandarin. It's, wouldn't be significant for Spanish, for example. You'll notice that all of the other languages, French, Latin, and Spanish, kind of came down just a little bit, and relatively, all came down. So we added a new language in 2008, and as a result, our other three language, I would say somewhat equally donated students to Mandarin, and that's a good thing. We actually had an opportunity this year to relook at whether or not we should continue with four languages, because we had a terrific teacher, Mrs. Mary DeMars, who taught, who taught third through sixth grade, French, retire. So, for about thirty seconds, we thought about, well, should we continue with French? And Dr. Griffith and everyone said, resounding yes. This is a real pride point to have four languages here in Lake Forest 67, so we're, we're very proud to continue all four languages. These are the placements of our students from eighth grade, DPM, this past year, into freshman year this year. And this is one of our key benchmarks, how we do, because our goal for our fourth, or our third through eighth grade program is to place students at Lake Forest High School in Level Two or Level Two honors. In other words, our program would, would, would take care of their Level One high school class. And as you can see in the blue, the smallest pie square there, we have Level One Plus. These are students that may have come into Deerpath late, in most cases, so they might have started Deerpath seventh grade or even eighth grade. And these students, and a few that just really didn't do well in language, ended up in a One Plus class, which means it's not a beginning language class, it's a, it's a review class. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, historically speaking, in 1994, this pie chart would have been ninety-nine percent blue.
So our, our DPM staff has done a terrific job, as well as beginning early, like we do. The red indicates the Level Two classes, so these are sophomore classes, and you see sixty-one percent of our graduates last year are in the Level Two classes. And the green is the part we're also proud of, that's Level Two honors. So we have twenty-seven percent of our graduates in that. All told, we have eighty-eight percent of our graduates from last year in Level Two or Level Two honors classes, and that's really a terrific, terrific number. I think last year we had eighty-one or eighty-two percent. Just a caveat, though, we had, as John Steiner reported to you from DPM, we had a lot of new students in seventh and eighth grade this year, so I would expect that our twelve percent in Level One Plus next year might be increased slightly, because we have new students entering us late. This is our elementary staff. Again, Mrs. Shaw is new there. Ms. Chen returns, as do all the others. Mrs. Harper and Mrs. Grubowski teach our second grade Latin program. The others are traveling teachers. Last year was the beginning of our third grade World Language Exploratory Program. As you recall, the purpose of this program was a couple-fold. We were looking at that time to reduce some district expenses, to get our budget in line with expected decline in revenue, and as a result of that, we kinda looked at our, our current resources and looked at how we might reshape them. Came up with the idea of developing a third grade World Language Exploratory in place of the two-days-a-week continuation of Latin in, in third grade. And we did, we did have quite a savings, but the other purpose, which I was more excited about, was we had been looking at students choosing a language, really only having experienced two of the four. So students had good experience in Latin from second to third grade, and they had many other siblings and many people that they knew might have spoken or had some familiarity with Spanish. So those two languages was, were, were strong choices for students before this exploratory, and not as many chose French or Mandarin, especially Mandarin, because so few of our parents had any experience with that language either. So of the two goals, save some money if we could, but also provide an exploratory for third graders to make a better choice in World Language. In May of last year, at the end of the first year of implementing this program, we asked all the parents to respond to a survey, and about half of them did, or actually, a little less than half. I wanna point out just a few of these. If you look at the very center of the screen, "The exploratory helped my child discover the language he or she wants to continue studying." Seventy-five agreed, thirty-nine strongly agreed, thirty-one were neutral, only ten said, nah, not so much. So a real strong positive on that, that this program helped the children choose the right language. The next one I wanted to point out was the middle, again. "The exploratory was a valuable learning experience for my child." Again, sixty-four strongly agreed, fifty-four agreed, twenty-four were neutral, and only twelve said no. So, again, they felt the exploratory was a real value to their children. I do have to point out one other, though, that was a little, a little bit concerning to me. This middle sentence here, "My child would have benefited more from twice-a-week instruction in Latin." And, and we had more people agreeing with that than disagreeing. So more of our respondents felt that Latin would have been more beneficial to their children. Some of those responses may have been that I had negatively worded that question, so if you were a person that goes, "Agree, agree, 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 agree," you would have been on the other side of that question. But it was a very short survey, so I kinda feel like it may have been accurate and may represent our parents, that they feel very strongly about the value of Latin here in Lake Forest and, and miss it to an extent in the third grade. All told, though, we're, we're very pleased with the program. The third grade teachers thought it was tremendous. They felt like their kids, through the fourteen, fifteen lessons of each language, were very excited, and the, the exploratory traveling teachers also felt it was great bene, of great benefit. So then, what was the outcome as far as placements? If you look at the purple bar, French, Latin, Mandarin, and Spanish, or the far-right bar of each, this shows what happened this year in, in our placement from third grade to fourth grade. These are the kids that had all, access to all four. We had eleven percent choose French, thirteen percent choose Latin, eighteen percent choose Mandarin, and fifty percent choose Spanish. That eighteen percent choosing Mandarin is, is almost double of what it had been the last two years, almost double. So that was highly significant. The other significant thing I see on this chart is that Latin is, seems to be stepping down. That's, that's starting to look like a trend to me. What do you think, Joe, four years in a row? I'm suspecting it's not gonna go too much further, though. It's certainly not gonna zero out, because having second grade Latin is still very exciting for our students, and, and I, personally, I think it's gonna be now more in line with what it might have been all along if children had, had access to learning a little bit of each other language. So, not worried that Latin will die off, but I, I think it's gonna stay steady now at about that level. So this year, we, we began an immersion program, our two teachers, Mrs. Jan and, and Ms. G, which contributed a great deal to our K-12 Mandarin numbers. At the top, we have forty students in, in kindergarten, twenty-nine in first. Second grade, we do Latin, so I didn't report anything there, but in third grade, I put off to the side that all of our third graders get a taste of Mandarin, so I said, you know, we'll count that a little bit. In fourth grade, forty-two are taking Mandarin this year, the first year that we've had to have larger-sized classrooms in some of the elementary schools. All told, twenty-nine, two-hundred-and-forty-nine students are taking Mandarin in, in Lake Forest, K-12. Hundred-and-eighty-eight in, in Deerpath and, and the elementaries, and another sixty, what is that, sixty-one at Lake Forest High School. As a result of the increasing numbers that we have, you know, I'm gonna back up here, there's an important point to make. This, this immersion program that we started with forty and, and twenty-nine, I fully expected a few parents to, to bring their kids out of the program after having experienced it for a few weeks, because that's the track record we saw up in Michigan with any of the new programs, that, you know, "Yeah, it's just not for my child, my child was a little frustrated, I don't, I don't know, this isn't maybe for us." We haven't had an inkling of that from our Lake Forest parents. In fact, we, we, we continue to have a waiting list for kindergarten, so it's been a tremendous start for the immersion program, from parents' perspective, and- and teachers and administration. Probably the coolest thing that happened to us recently is winning this award, this Asia Society Award that Dr. Griffith pointed out last month. Not only brought us ten thousand this year and quite possibly more money in the years ahead, it gave us recognition as one of two school districts in the state, one of a hundred school districts in the United States. So, you know, I see this as attraction for Mandarin teachers in the future. "Oh, look, Lake Forest is a Confucius classroom. I want to go teach there." And that's really important to us, as you know, getting the best teachers. All told, then, we've accumulated thirty-two thousand so far of grant money. We actually have another grant written at this point that I'm hoping in the next month or two we'll hear about from the state of Illinois. And we've developed terrific partnerships, not only with Michigan State University, but with Barrington and Schaumburg, who have started immersion programs as well. In fact, this Thursday, Carolyn Crumis and I are taking our immersion teachers to Barrington, and we're bringing down a Michigan State University professor to work with us on developing curriculum. So, we're sharing expenses, which is wonderful, but we're also learning from each other. We formed a district immersion committee, parents, teachers, administration. And these are some of the things that I've asked them to help me with, to study and to recommend, how we can continue to support teaching and learning in the current program, how we should develop this next registration process. Do we need to make changes to make it more effective and fair? We need to do a program evaluation. I know Joe Moline is helping us with that, but we'll be looking at that and reporting to you about that later in the year. We're kind of looking at this point of leaving the program the same next year with two new classes of kindergarten. That'll be my recommendation at this point, because I don't have a lot of data on the success of the program, so kind of status quo. It could change, but I don't think it will. But in 2013, fourteen, another year beyond, I think this committee ought to look at the possibilities of if this program is very successful and if we have a high parent demand, how should we effectively expand it? Should we look at Spanish? Or should we continue more Mandarin? These will be tough questions. It'll be brought to you, and hopefully we'll have some good information for you. So then, looking ahead at the year 2015, that'll be the first year that these first-grade students hit the middle school. And Principal John Steiner and I have already begun talking about how we can increase and include Mandarin immersion students and continued learning there. And of course, we're going to continue to look for new money to fund this. Any questions?
I think the grant piece is great news. Keep up the good work.
Thanks. Thanks. I should remind all of us, though...
Excuse me, I was reminded to use my microphone.
(laughing)
And so, great news on the grant work, and I think as the programs accelerate, wouldn't surprise me that the grants do. So, keep it up.
Thank you, Jeff. You know, the exciting thing about the model that we've chosen is this fifty-fifty model is no more expensive for personnel than any of our other programs. So, in that sense, it's not a new expense to us. What is new each year will be new curriculum for second grade next year, third grade the year after. So, there's a developmental cost of that. Thanks.
Andy, I was wondering on the comment with respect to Latin, twice a week, full disclosure, I'm a parent of a Latin student and seem to know a lot of Latin students, but are you looking into that more, or could you just comment on it a little bit?
You know, I think we'll go ahead and survey parents again at the end of this year about the exploratory, and we might develop with Joe's help, a couple more questions around that to see, you know, was this because parents had felt the newness of this, and this was such a loss, and next year it'll be kind of status quo? Or is this going to continue to be the feeling of our parent group? So, it's an important question. Thanks.
I also feel, in reference to that, perhaps the way it was worded, if you look at the entire questionnaire, that might give you a little more insight as to why that was answered that way.
It's a possibility, yeah. I think repeating that survey and doing a little bit better job of it will be a good idea. Thanks.
Thanks for the survey.
Board members, just two other quick things. First of all, at the high school level, we have an exchange program with a high school in Shanghai. It's called High School Number Two. We actually, the school board president of District Sixty-seven, Dr. Mike Cyrus and I, the three of us were in China twice with other folks from our community on the first trip. When we went back the second time, we found this incredibly fine high school in Shanghai, and they've agreed, we signed the paperwork to create a partnership with this high school. Every other year, a dozen students from that high school come to Lake Forest. We had them here just a couple of weeks ago, living in twelve different homes. Then, of course, we brought them to the high school, these twelve students. We paired them up with other students, went to Chicago, showed them different parts of the city. Just, they had a great experience. This spring, we will have our dozen students, who have been already selected, will be going on to Shanghai for their two-week experience. They'll live in the dorm. It's a public school dormitory school in Shanghai. It's a very, very, very high-end achieving school. There seemed to be a lot of similarity between their school and ours, and we've also had some of their faculty here with us. So, by the way, we have two exchange programs. I'm not sure people in the community know. Not only do we have an exchange program with this high school in Shanghai, China, but we have another exchange program. The off-year, a dozen students come from Holland to Lake Forest High School, and we send a dozen students, there's always one or two faculty, to Holland ourselves in the same year. So, we actually have two exchange programs with other countries. Having said that, board members, this is just a very quick overview of how we're doing. I think the placement is really something to watch. That's an outcome, how our students doing at Lake Forest High School. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of our students used to go to Lake Forest High School taking Language One, not Language Level Two, but Language One. And that's a radical change. It looks normal to us today. The fact that we have twenty-seven percent of our students in French, Latin, Spanish, honors two, excuse me, honors Level Two at the high school, that's very, very high-end Spanish, French, and Latin for a ninth grader. So, I think we can be very proud of our student population for that. And then finally, I'd like to say, just one little note to the board. A subtle thing happened in the meeting here from Andy's presentation. Joe Moline is our educational researcher. We actually hired him from a research company and has done wonderful work helping us on assessment, but it's nearly impossible to get Joe to commit to a causation statement. So, when Andy said that, "Joe, would you agree there's a four-year trend here?" And I saw Joe nodding his head, that was as close to a commitment on a finding as we've ever gotten from Joe. So, congratulations, Andy. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Great report. I do have one question that I would like, I'm just curious about, not for tonight necessarily, but for a future report, and that is, how many of those students who are starting in two or two-plus as freshmen go on and actually complete Spanish Five or French Five? Since that's kind of that path towards fluency that I think is something that is very valued in the workplace.
Andy, I think the answer is you'd have to ask the high school superintendent that.
Yes, I will. I actually know a little bit about that, but I won't speak numbers to you.
Oh, no, go ahead. If you already know that, that's good.
I will say that I was at Nutria just the other day. We took Han Zhao, our high school Mandarin teacher, to go visit their Mandarin teacher, because they've been teaching AP Mandarin for a number of years. So, I sat down with the world language director there and heard again what I've heard from Mary Kay Kerner, our instructional director for world language, and that is that these north suburban high schools, students tend to stay longer in languages than they do across the state, because kids do realize that, well, probably for one, more of the colleges, that our students are going to require four years of language. And I think also our kids probably are more worldly in their realization that they need to stay in it for their own sake. But I'll come back to you with some numbers on that. Good question.
Thank you.
Andy, are there immersion programs in other languages that are prevalent in other schools?
The most...
Did I miss the microphone?
Yes, you did.
Are there immersion programs in other languages in other schools throughout the state?
There are.
What do we learn from that in possibly expanding into other languages?
The most common language that we see as an emergent language is Spanish, because it's one of the most useful languages to Americans, but also because it doubles in many districts as a place to help English as a second language learners acclimate and get to know English as well. So, these programs, typically if you have twenty-two students in a class, eleven of them will be native Spanish speakers, and eleven of them will be native English speakers. And they'll come together in an immersion program where it could be fifty-fifty, a dual-language program, where both English and Spanish is taught for a number of years. That's the most common thing we see across the state and maybe the nation, although I don't know. I think what we've learned from that is that kids become bilingual very quickly in that model. It's a very successful model. But one of the challenges of the program is continuing that education into the middle and high school, where you've got a period-by-period schedule and, you know, multiple levels of math and language and tech and lots of offerings. So, that's a challenge for any immersion program to sustain that learning. Schaumburg has a Japanese immersion program, has had it for some years. We've learned a little bit about that and how they report to parents and their expectations. But these are very, very rare outside of Spanish.
You know, the first time Andy presented the Mandarin immersion program in the community was over at Cherokee School, early last spring. So, I was there to listen to the presentation. It was very well attended by our parents. When his discussion about the Mandarin immersion program was over, and I was leaving the school, I happened to just walk out with one of our moms who introduced herself. She said, "I'm new to Cherokee School. I'm a new mother. Here, I have moved here from the Minneapolis area. And in the Minneapolis area, immersion programs are ubiquitous. They are everywhere. It's very common. We have French immersion. We have Spanish immersion, Mandarin immersion. I'm not really sure I understand the concern about immersion. It seems to me like it's normal." And I realized right then that how much that's our culture, that here on the North Shore, immersion programs are very uncommon. And there's no reason for it other than it's just tradition and culture. So, I feel that there are other parts of the country we could look at. The opportunities for other kinds of immersion programs do exist in Lake Forest. Obviously, Spanish makes, you know, obviously would be a really good target for us. But I feel like over time, this committee can start to identify that. I think the creation of the committee board members is really a good thing, not only as we monitor the Mandarin program, but the potential for further expansion of immersion programs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Brainstormers Report. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, this is part of our program. I thought you'd want to hear a report on. Bridget Booker from our elementary schools, who is our tech coach and assistant principal at Everett School is here to, she's the director, Bridget is the director of our Brainstormers program. Brainstormers is our after-school program that we provide additional programming for students throughout the school year. I think you're going to be very interested in this. There's a high correlation to after-school activity and student achievement across the country. It's very well researched. So, the district supporting these kinds of activities is very, very useful to our students in their overall development, both academically and socially. So, Bridget, thank you for being here tonight for this.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith and Board of Education. Today, I have a few slides presented that is really a summary of what's in the board packet. Brainstormers is a self-funded program that's evolved to be an enrichment opportunity for our students in grades K through eight. It prides itself in providing students with wonderful opportunities in theater and music, and it produces first-rate musical productions that utilize the talents of our District Sixty-seven music and drama teachers, and it also unlocks or further advances the acting and singing talents of our District Sixty-seven students. Citadel Theater has also supported us last year in our musicals by providing us with director assistance. Brainstormers has also grown to include a variety of elementary offerings in art, music, chess, as well as continuing to offer academic classes primarily through its summer school Since becoming the director of Brainstormers in 2004, the enrollment has increased forty percent to one thousand one hundred and thirteen students. I compiled the various enrollments and classes to highlight themes for the school year, as well as our summer program. As you can see, twenty percent of our total enrollment consists of drama and formal musical offerings in grades K through eight. Last year, our musicals were Willy Wonka Kids for students in grades K through four, and we started with one cast, and we had so much interest that we developed two casts, and we were able to include everybody that was registered. And then, we also had for students in grades five through eight, Bye Bye Birdie. There was also a traditional play that consisted of a Halloween theme, and they had two one-act plays. So, we tried to give them an opportunity to do something that's non-musical as well. And this year, we've actually partnered with Citadel Theater, and at the elementary level, we are offering a non-musical opportunity this fall, and then we'll be moving into our musical in the wintertime. Nearly seventeen percent of our enrollment is with art classes at the elementary level, and it again speaks to the high quality of art teachers that we have in our district. They've been wonderful in terms of finding out what students are interested in and designing classes that would be of their interest area. We had quite a few new art offerings for last year, which included specialized crafts, drawing, clay, sewing, and pillow making, and a class called Stop Motion Video, which utilized our flip video cameras. Elementary music is our next area with one hundred and fifty-three participants, which is about twelve percent of our enrollment. And those offerings are typically orf and drum classes. We do have a cap on those, because we only have twenty instruments, so the classes are capped at twenty. So, part of the enrollment is just that cap. We do offer several performances throughout the year, and those are usually at the musicals at each of the elementary buildings, and sometimes, last year, we had a special performance at one of the schools. Another high area is chess, and it's gained popularity. It's our third year with a program called Chess Wizards. And Chess Wizards is actually found nationwide, and they do have a headquarters area in Chicago. They bring professional wizards in, and they're dressed in appropriate attire, which they all know when the wizards are coming, because they see them in their cloaks. And they teach weekly classes, and some of the students have actually branched out and have attended regional tournaments and have come back with different awards and things that they come back to the school with. So, they've been very proud. So, that's been another good elementary offering. And then, we continue to offer a Math Masters Class, elementary math, and it's basically been an attractive alternative to Kumon classes and other outside opportunities. And I believe that parents have enjoyed this math class in particular, because it includes technology resources, math games, manipulatives, and it's kind of a fun way to practice math, and it also utilizes our teachers and our district curriculum as well. And last year, we also had an elementary enrichment class, where students from all three schools came together to Deer Path and participated in an enrichment class. On a more academic side, the summer enrollment has almost three hundred students, two hundred and ninety-one actually, and the primary emphasis of the summer programs are reading and writing at a hundred and nine students, and then math at a hundred and seven students. Although all the grades are well-attended, as you see in your report, the fifth grade continues to be the highest enrollment area, and parents really seem to speak to wanting their kids... their kids to experience Deer Path and kind of get their feet wet and begin their school year in a very calm kind of easy way. So those are really the summary slides that I prepared this evening. I really do enjoy working with the teachers and the parents and developing and working with teachers to increase the types of enrollments that we have in class offerings. As I mentioned previously, Citadel Theater is an organization that we're working with currently for elementary plays. We also have an exciting iPad class that our art teacher is working on, so that's been exciting to see that. And kind of going along with the last report, we're also getting prepared to offer a Mandarin class for parents, teachers and other students at the elementary level. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for the report. It's exciting to see increasing enrollment. Could you sense from these trends which area has attributed most to the growth since you've been involved in Brainstormers?
Probably the area that's grown the most is the art classes. I think traditionally, the musicals have been the areas that have pulled in the most excitement and interest. And I think our staple has always been the academic classes, but that again is more of the summer programming. We've tried to do more creative programming in the summer. However, it seems that even through previous surveys that parents have their students or their children involved in a lot of different outside activities for those couple months. And so they really come back in August ready to do some classes. But again, they're looking a little more academic at that point.
With the academics, is there any differentiation in skill level? Or are all the children in one group and kind of stuck with whatever the program is?
Since our academic programs are staffed by our teachers and class sizes are typically low, they're able to differentiate. And sometimes we've actually put in classes of, because they've been such small enrollment, we may sometimes put in two-grade levels together, which actually provides for a little more differentiation and, and learning and growing from each other. So I think small group work and they've used technology resources as well. They've, they've blogged over this summer. So I do feel that differentiation is easily done because our teachers are used to doing that. But secondly, the class sizes are smaller than what their typical sizes would be in the school year.
Thank you very much. That was a very informative report.
Thank you.
Now we go on to board committee reports, starting first with the board education committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
Thank you first to Dr. Hendrickson for presenting the World Language Report tonight in detail. The education committee did not meet this month, but will meet next on Tuesday, November 15th at 8:15 a.m. at West Campus. Prior to this meeting, committee members will study and reflect on the district dashboard found on the district website, and we will offer suggestions regarding data we believe should be illustrated, et cetera. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Bill?
I, no, thank you, Julia.
Okay, thank you. The board operations committee, Lori Rose and Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julia. The board operations committee did not meet this past month. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 1st at, I'm sorry, our next meeting is scheduled for-
December 6th.
December 6th at 8:30 in the morning at Everett School. As we reported last month, we're going to be doing a walkthrough with a focus on the capital improvement program. And the committee and the board and our community would like to especially extend a warm welcome to our new committee members for the operations committee who will be joining us in December, Stephanie Victor, Richard Lee and Lisa Mitchell. We had an exceptional group of applicants with very high qualifications, and we congratulate these new committee members and appreciate the interest of all members in the community in the operations committee. This concludes the operations committee report.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing.
Thank you. The board finance committee, Jeff Penderzky and John Julian.
The finance committee did hold a meeting this morning, October 25th jointly with District 115. And present were Jim Carey, John Scribner, Will Toms from 115, along with myself, John Julian, Liz Brandell, Dr. Griffith, Alan Albus, Jennifer Hermes, Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair, and our two new community members, Keith LeVanway and Mike Warkowski. Thank you for joining us. The meeting was called to order at 7:30 a.m., and both districts approved their respective minutes from their last meeting. Alan Albus reported that the city of Lake Forest will not be terminating the West Lake Forest TIF district on October 31st, 2011, as expected. The TIF will, will remain open until December 31st, about another year, 2012, which is the original due date. This means that property tax revenue, which would have been distributed to the schools in June and September of 2012, will be delayed until March of 2013, at which time the surplus TIF funds will be distributed. Fourth, Alan described the process used to determine the tax levy in great detail, and the team had quite a discussion on this topic. He reported that the amount of the extension of revenue for each district reserves, receives is limited by a calculation in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. In English, that means we, there's a cap that we, to the amount that we can ask for. Wouldn't you agree? Yeah. The projected extension is based on the current assumptions regarding new construction figures and the projected increase in existing property values. Both committees discussed and endorsed their respective tentative 2011 and 2012 tax levies. So the District 115 committee members adjourned about 8:15. That left just the District 67 folks with one topic. And Alan, Alan described several very concerning uncertainties that could affect district revenue, expenses and reserves in the next several years. He reported that cost-saving measures initiated in measured doses has kept the district finances on track financially up until this time and has allowed the, the district to remain fiscally sound during these tough economic times. Dr. Griffith reported that District 67 maintained their standard and poor's AAA rating. Elizabeth Hennessy of William Blair and Company brought back the four debt refunding options presented at the last meeting. The group discussed the options and current financial uncertainties, which include, and I want to take a minute on this because they're, they're serious. The current economic uncertainties discussed at our meeting include the potential of continued soft tax revenue due to low CPI and very light new construction because of the bad economy. Second is property tax reform. Third is little or no state payments that come into the district. Fourth, the North Shore Board of Realtors challenging or suing about special assessment districts in some communities around the district. Next, low interest rate earnings, virtually zero. Potentially funding mandatory, potential mandatory funding of the office of the regional superintendent, replacing, wearing physical plant that was replaced 10 years ago. And in additional investment in physical plants such as carpet, invest, asbestos abatement, et cetera. And finally, that, in the end of this discussion, we went ahead and decided that it would be best to go ahead and refinance the entire bond issue rather than buy down some of the bonds with the cash on hand, just due to the sheer number and the sheer magnitude of the financial uncertainty that the district faces in the years ahead. So later in our packet, we, I think we're going to vote on that tonight as a board, right? Right, Alan? Right, Julia? And that discussion took more than an hour, and although we went through some pretty tough topics, I think we're making the right decision between basically refinancing and using very inexpensive money and using, using our reserve of cash. And in the end, we think it's just better to hold the cash for this long list of uncertainties. The meeting adjourned at 10, at 9:25, and at this point, there is not another meeting scheduled because I don't think anybody could handle one at this point. John, John, would you add anything to that?
I wouldn't dare, no.
So that, that man of president concludes the finance report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our, the district committees in which we serve the role as of liaisons. First, the North Suburban Special Education District, Jeff Penderzky.
There is no N S S E D report this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. The Illinois Association of School Boards and Ed Red, Bill Anderson.
We do have a report. Ed Red, as you know, is the lobbying organization that represents suburban school districts, including Lake Forest. And they just had a recent report where they commented that the state legislature is in session starting this week, and that there are three important pieces of legislation that could affect education. The first one, and relative to Jeff's comments, House Bill 3793 affects the way that tax rates can be set during a time of declining property values. Perhaps we can have a discussion with Alan about that at some point. House Bill 3828 is another tax-related bill related to education. And then House Bill 605 authorizes changes in the way that Illinois State report cards will be presented to, presented to parents. And then one other issue which we mentioned last time, there's a task force chaired by the lieutenant governor, looking into ways to consolidate some school districts to save money. And the task force has been holding a number of hearings around the state on this topic, and will report back if there's any, any developments. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to chime in there, there, Bill. I, I think the one that concludes, that, that concerns the finance committee the most is the bill that addresses decreasing taxes in the face of declining property values, because that, that obviously hits a lot of communities and especially ours.
Absolutely. And I will say, Ed Red, I don't want to speak for everyone on the board, but our lobbying group strongly opposes the bill, and they're working to see that, I think, more local control under district revenues is maintained around the state.
Thank you very much. Professional Development, Rick Schuler.
There's no report, but committee meetings have begun, and I've been assured by Andy Hendrickson that there'll be a report next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Lori Rose.
Thank you, Julia. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee met on October 20th with the assistance of Andy Hendrickson. And I'm going to call Andy up to give you a little pricey and maybe an audio visual on this, since he did such a great job on World Language. But before I do, I'd just like to mention that we've long spoken about the homeschool partnership. And with respect to bullying, you'll hear some exciting things going on in the elementary schools that transition to the middle schools. But I would, I would ask everybody in our community to try to have a discussion at home sometime this month to address this issue with your own family, whether your child's been a victim, accused of bullying a bully, or simply a bystander. It's an important issue that we can all work together on. And now Andy, thank you.
Thanks, Lori. You know, a number of years ago, we put in place a bully-proofing, social-emotional wellness curriculum with our students K, K8. And since then, the state actually mandated having such a program. This summer, in response to our teachers in the, in the earliest grades, K3, requesting more, more meaty materials, more activities with some bite and engaging aspects to it, a group of, of teachers came together, psychologists, social workers under Dr. Michelle Shin, and I know Dr. Julie Cooley was involved a bit too, to look over curriculum materials and try to find some activities that could be done weekly to support our existing curriculum. And, and they found that. So they came to CCC last, last week, presenting a K1 program called Smart Kids, SMART standing for Social Grace Manners and Respectful Talk. That was kind of cute. And it gets into not only how you treat each other, but good manners. And, and some of the activities they shared were, were fun, and I, and I think parents would really appreciate the carryover from what they do at home to how we, how we work at school, so that when you see a child, the child is expected to look you in the eyes and say hello, and the same things that parents are teaching at home. And we're hoping that these, these activities, these lessons will transfer also to the way they treat each other on the playground. In grades two and three, additional activities to beef up our Bully Blockers program. The program is Tough Kid Bully Blockers Book, and it's chock full of activities that we think the kids will enjoy working through with their teachers. So it's not a big commitment in, in light of all the other things we're doing as far as instructional minutes, but it is what the teachers requested, so we're, we're very pleased that this committee put this together. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the Spirit of 67 Foundation Report. In the month of September, the Spirit received 101 contributions. Several of those were from the green forms handed out at Curriculum Night. New families made up 94 of the 101 contributions, so total members to date are 304. Donations are still $13,000 below the same period last year. However, the Phone-A-Thon occurred last week, and so it will, we do not yet have the, the results of the Phone-A-Thon, which I think the Spirit is hoping will make up that difference. In addition, Granger has committed to its fourth year of donating $10,000 to the Spirit. The Spirit actually has a board member, Lorraine Greve, who continues to focus on corporate donations, and Megan Andress, who's a new board member, will be focusing on local sponsorships and support. That concludes the Spirit of 67 Foundation Report. Are there any other committees that met that a board member would like to report?
I just have one other comment on my other report, if I, that I didn't get to. It has to do with the new education reform bill, which was signed by Governor Quinn in June. Historically, there haven't been any training requirements for school board members in Illinois. But starting with this new bill, there will be four hours of mandatory school board training. It doesn't apply until people who are elected after 2013, so it won't apply to any current members until their next, should they, they have a next, next term. But there is going to be mandatory training for the Illinois Open Meetings Act, which was also signed in June, and that will be required for all current board members by the end of 2012. And there's a panel at the seminar next week or next month at the IASB conference, or you'll be able to do it online. Everyone, for the first time, will have to do some training to be on school board.
Going in a positive direction, I think. That's one, Bill, we can probably agree with.
Let me just piggyback on that. Actually, Bill, I was going to say something about this also, just for our community. We have a strong professional development program in District 67 where we try to refresh our skills as administrators and teachers on a fairly regular basis, and the board helps us with that. There is a commitment, financial commitment to, you know, assisting us by trainers and attendance and workshops, et cetera. So just like Andy said, taking a group off to Barrington to meet with other immersion teachers, learning from each other. Our Board of Education does the same thing. There are boards who don't. But again, this year, in, on November 18th-
There are boards who don't, but again, this year, in, on November 18th, we've got five of our seven board members are attending an all-day training session in Chicago. It's an annual conference that's held among school board members, superintendents, and business officials of the state. Literally 10, 10,000 to 15,000 people are there, many sessions. I want to congratulate the board members, who once again, of District 67, have a very strong turnout for this training. What is best practice at the board level? There's different topics. And then, I guess I would just like to add, this year, I've been asked to be a presenter myself, so on Saturday, the 19th, I'll be doing a program with our architect. It is high school, related in, we'll be talking about taking, well, 67 also, we'll be taking, you know, how you take old spaces and convert them into modern, innovative places for teachers and children to work in. So congratulations to our board members who are able to attend on the all-day sessions on November 18th.
Thank you. That brings us to recommendations. The first recommendation is the approval of debt refunding resolution. Dr. Griffith?
Thank you, Madam President. Alan Albus can give us a brief overview. This is a topic that was reviewed by the Finance Committee, and tonight, we are here with a recommendation from the committee for this action. Alan?
In September of 2002, the district issued $5,850,000 of limited debt certificates. The final payment on those bonds will be due on January 1st, 2016. The bonds will become callable on January 1st, 2012, and at that time, the outstanding debt will be $2,130,000. On a regular basis, William Blair monitors for their clients' refunding opportunities. And in general, when the refunding opportunity yields a present value savings of 3% or more, they recommend that you refinance the debt. Now, again, these bonds first become callable January 1 of 2012. Based on current market conditions, we have exceeded that 3%. So this came to you in September. You may recall, we tabled it, because earlier in that day, the Finance Committee, in discussing it, said, why don't we look at some other scenarios? Why don't we look at paying down a portion of that debt, refinancing a portion, or maybe just paying it off? And what would that mean to us? So over the last month, we've done that, and again, with the help of Blair. Mr. Penderzki touched on some of the discussion that occurred at this morning's committee meeting, and some of the headwinds that the district faces. And again, just to touch on them, potential pension reform, there's, there's a likelihood that one component of that might be to shift more of the cost to the local employers, being the district. The governor has not funded the regional offices of education. It's an elected office. I don't think that will be allowed to continue through the year, and the solution that's being talked about is paying for that out of corporate personal property replacement taxes. Now, the problem with that is corporate personal property replacement taxes, right now, go to municipalities and schools. So in effect, we'll be paying for it. So that would be skimmed off the top, so we're looking at a potential revenue reduction there. At a revenue committee in Springfield this morning, or, or today, they did talk about House Bill 3793, which basically would say is if your EAV goes down in a year, there is no increase. The property tax cap formula that's been in place 20 years would be suspended. There'd be no increase. That coupled with the decline in interest rates, the delay in state payments, the reduction in state funding, the potential corporate personal property replacement tax is significant. I mean, it, it's hard to deal with those. And also, on a national level, if there is an agreement on the national debt by a certain date, I think it's around Thanksgiving, certain things automatically kick in, which is going to likely mean a reduced flow of revenue to states. Illinois already has a severe cash flow problem, so that could have an impact on us. So we talked through, as Mr. Penderzki said, we spent an hour on this. We talked through these things. We also then looked at, thanks to Liz Hennessy's calculations, the net present dollar savings of the different scenarios. And we went from refinancing everything, paying off $360,000, which is about 1% of our operating budget, and then financing the balance, paying off $560,000, or paying off a million. The net present dollar value difference between all those scenarios, the lowest one, refinancing it all, is about $92,900. Paying a million dollars down, pardon?
In savings.
In savings, yes. Net present dollar value savings. Paying off a million dollars in doing that only yields a net present dollar savings of $122,129. So it's a difference of about $30,000. But given the headwinds that we're looking at, I think as we got our arms around that, we all kind of came to consensus that it was more valuable to hold on to the funds. Then I think the icing on the cake was just looking down the road and projecting, well, what happens if interest rates go up in the next, you know, 18 months from now? We'd also, which we hadn't factored in, is we'd be losing the investment opportunity on those funds by paying them down. So take a million dollars. If we have that and rates go up to 3% in 18 months, there's $30,000. That, that makes up that difference. So we all, now, I hate to predict interest rates, because everybody's been wrong over the last several years, including us. So really, when we weighed that out, I think the consensus of the group was, let's go ahead and refinance the outstanding debt. The rates are really low. We only have a short period. We have about five years left till they're all paid off anyway. And it was a healthy discussion. It was a good discussion, and I think we're all comfortable with where we landed on that. And so before you tonight is a resolution from Chapman and Cutler. I think it's about 40-something pages, that establishes the parameters and authorizes us to go to market to refinance the bonds.
Alan, just to supplement that, board members, District 67 has a very low, very low level of indebtedness. So we, we have very small amount of bond, outstanding bond. We've used some debt in the past just to accelerate projects, accelerate, you know, the construction of the computer labs, or the introduction of a, of the science labs in the school, and then pay that out over a several-year period. In comparison to most districts, it's a very, very small amount of indebtedness in our district. So I think that's important, and I, it's recognized recently. I want to thank our staff, our Finance Committee, because Standard and Poor's also has recently rerated District 67 as a AAA organization. So it's something to be proud of in these difficult times. And also want to thank the Finance Committee for their deliberate work that they put into this this morning.
Any questions, board members?
I guess this is for Alan, or maybe Jeff. After, assuming we pass this resolution tonight and we go to market, prevailing market rates, what would our debt ratio then be?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I, I agree with Dr. Griffith. That is very low. I can calculate that tomorrow and send that to you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the, the debt fund refinancing?
So moved, Madam Chairman. I second that.
Any further discussion, board members? May I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to the levy. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, at this time of the year, each year, you are asked to consider adoption of a tentative tax levy. This is not the actual approval of the tax levy for the forthcoming school year, but rather, this is a recommendation from the Administration and Finance Committees, Committee to put on public display for public comment at a, at a future board meeting, the tax levy for the, a, the subsequent school year. So Alan will give you, board members and the community, a quick overview of what our tax levy, how our tax levy is constructed for the next year.
Annually, the board is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy. Now, the tax levy must be adopted and filed with the county by the last Tuesday in December. The process includes adopting a tentative levy at least 20 days before you adopt a final levy. And so when you look at the calendar based on the board meeting schedules, we had to present to you tonight a tentative levy, and we'll bring back a final levy either in November or December for, for action. A tax levy is simply a request for property taxes to fund the school year that starts the following July. While the board can levy or ask for any amount it desires, the amount of revenue, revenue actually received is limited by a calculation contained in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. A component of that formula will not be known till next spring, that piece being new construction. So therefore, anything we talk about tonight, our projections, but based on historic numbers and that, I expect them to be reasonably close. In your packet is a memo with two attachments. I think I hit the wrong one. There we go. I left my glasses at the table, but that looks fuzzy to me. Am I the only one? Oh, that's okay. No, I just can't see the other. Very quickly, I'll, I'll walk you through this. At the top, it shows our projected EAV. EAV means equalized assessed value of property within the district. That shows the 2010 number. We expect to see the EAV in the district drop about 6%. And we're anticipating new construction of about $15 million, and that number came from the county, so that's an estimate. Last year, I think the number was about $17 million. So that gives us a projected tax base of 2.4 billion. The next segment shows the 2010 extension. You take out your bond and interest. I won't go into it, but that's done differently to ensure that the investors are paid, and that, that's actually levied by the county. And so you take the remaining amount of 27.7 million, and you increase that by the CPI. That number is known for next year. It's 1.5%. So basically, under the tax cap law, the district is allowed to receive an extension that's 1.5% greater than what it received last year, or, or for this year. So that would bring the number up to 28.1 million. You divide that by the EAV less the new construction, and we get a projected tax rate. The number highlighted in yellow is the number that we are projecting with new construction added in that we're going to receive. Now, because new construction isn't known, and because this is an estimate, and also to give us some flexibility in where we allocate, even though on the tax bill, you see two lines, District 67 and the retirement fund, which is for all the employees but teachers. Our goal is to anticipate what this number is and levy a little more to cover any variance in new construction, but to give us some latitude in how we allocate among funds. So while we expect to get 28,366,000, we're recommending that you actually levy 28,600,000. And what we reviewed this morning with the Finance Committee is based on historical numbers of new construction, we think that's more than adequate to cover what we anticipate to receive. So again, what you're adopting tonight is a tentative levy, and we'll come back either in November or December and ask you to adopt a final levy, and then we would file it with the county prior to the last Tuesday in December.
Alan, are you saying that that number covers a cushion to cover any differential in new construction, or is that really the, the variable?
Yes. And the way the tax formula works is whatever the formula yields, if you ask for at least that amount or more, you'll get what the formula yields. So you could ask for, you know, $10 million more than what the, and it's going to knock it back down to just the calculation. But if you under-levy, you only get what you ask for. And the problem there is that's not only a one-year experience, because everything's predicated on the prior year. So that would be a loss of revenue in all future years. So again, we try to estimate what we realistically think it's going to be. We ask for a little more for two reasons. As we go to build next year's budget, gives us a little more latitude in how we allocate it among the funds. We don't get to increase the aggregate number, but we just have a little more flexibility in where we place it, and to ensure that we've covered all the new, possible new construction coming on.
Alan, just going back to the earlier presentation with the enrollment figures and everything, I mean, it looks like, you know, in the past four or five years, enrollment for the district is down about 10% or so. At the same time, certain of our costs are going up way faster than inflation and all. So how do you sort of think about all those things, and how do they interplay with each other?
During the course of the year, the Finance Committee will spend a lot of time looking at the five-year projection, and you're right, some of those things work in opposite directions. Some have greater weight than others. And so the five-year projection is really trying to take those down on an individual basis and, and project out what is the trend on, on general state aid, because that goes down as enrollment declines. What is the trend on interest earnings? What is the trend on property taxes and CPI? What is the trend on health insurance, on salaries? So we make scores of assumptions and line them all up and put them all together, and that becomes our aggregate projection. Then based on what that shows us, that really kind of sets the direction for us about if we need to trim or cut back or contain costs, what areas, then we try to focus on.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the 2011 tentative tax levy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold?
Oh, aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda items. We have the approval of minutes of a regular meeting and a budget hearing on September 27th, 2011. The approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements. From September 2011, we had disbursements of $1,525,988.12. We had payrolls in September of $1,405,285.16. And we had the September 2011 financial report. We have the approval of human resource items, including leave requests, new staff, retirements, and status changes. And we have the destruction of audio recordings on November 17th, 2009. Okay. Do we need to approve the amended consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
The personnel report was amended. Okay, is there any item that any board member would like removed from the amended consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to our FOIA requests. We had one. We did have an executive session prior to the meeting this evening. No action was taken. Is there any item a board member would like added to a future agenda? Seeing none, we move to announcements. Tuesday, November 8th, is the next Spirit Board meeting at 9:00 a.m. here. Wednesday, November 9th, is the APT Executive Board meeting, 9:00 a.m. here. I think John Julian is attending that meeting?
I will check.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Here is at LFHS West Campus for both those meetings. Friday, November 11th, is School Improvement Day, a half-day student attendance. Monday, November 21st, parent-teacher conferences will be held from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And on Tuesday, November 22nd, parent-teacher conferences will be held 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. On Wednesday, November 23rd, there is no school. It is a day of non-attendance. Thursday, November 24th, is Thanksgiving Day, no school. Friday, November 25th, is also no school. And Tuesday, November 29th, is the next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 o'clock at LFHS West Campus in the boardroom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.